Morning, everyone. I would like to call to order the Saturday, February 1st, 2002, Board of Education Budget Workshop. Bill, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to know if anyone had any public comment. We don't see anyone, so I want to close public comment. So, good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for being here on a Saturday to begin our budget process. This is really one of the most important tasks that we do as a Board of Education. And so shortly, we're going to be reviewing the superintendent's recommended 2020-2021 budget and working towards adopting our school budget to present to our town council. So I hope our focus during these sessions are to be providing resources to fulfill the Farmington Public Schools' mission and vision of the graduate. It's our duty as a Board of Education to provide these resources and continue to offer an exemplary education for the students and families of Farmington. So today, the process, we have our books, we're going to be going through them line by line. We are going to be hearing explanations and rationales for all the increases and the decreases on the superintendent's recommended budget. We will hear what our superintendent has already reduced from this budget after receiving requests from our district leaders and administrators. And I just want to commend Kathy because she really always recommends a budget to us that is not only in the best interest of our students, but also our taxpayers. So we thank her so much for that. Thursday night, our town council adopted budget targets for the overall budget, and they would, due to, you know, large projects, the high school, there was some conversation, they are hoping to keep the overall budget in Farmington this year at below 3%. I need to put that in perspective for everyone. Budget targets are really a starting point and a hope. They are, in my opinion, and we can talk about others' opinions later on in discussion, they are not always taken into consideration what the needs are of the district due to the points that we are all at. Even the town is not ready. So it is, I just want to put in perspective, it is a starting point, and it's my hope that we can move forward and pass a budget based on the needs. It's our duty. So as we move forward shortly, please ask questions. Every effort will be made to get them answered today. If not, we will bring the answers back for Monday night's board meeting and the continuation of our budget deliberations. I just ask that we be considerate. It does take a lot of time on Monday away from the school day to get these questions answered, so I appreciate that. So I just thank you all for your thoughtful consideration as we go through. And now I'm going to ask Kathy Greeter to present her budget overview.
I do want to begin by thanking Alicia, Kim, Amy, Beth, our DLC, Matt, Tim, everyone who's been part of the development of this budget, including our faculty. This is a long process that we go through with many meetings and questions and times where we try to find deficiencies or contain costs during that process. I also want to thank Mary for organizing the meeting today and taking care of us with nice treats for later on when we need energy. And of course Nicole, Mary and Nicole work very closely with each other, so everyone in the school district that helped to prepare this budget. So I'm pleased to present the superintendent's recommended budget for the 2020-2021 school year to the Board of Education and community. This budget was developed to address the Board of Education's mission and improvement design within the budget guidelines that were passed earlier, the sheer policies of the Board, and state and federal requirements. It is important to note that this is a maintenance budget, and we used zero-based budgeting throughout the budget development process. Farmington's mission is outlined on this slide, and our mission directly aligns to our improvement design, creating a through line from our mission and strategic improvement priorities to all classrooms, all students, and all schools. This visual represents our strategic improvement design, and it serves as the foundation of our budget development. The "what" is our vision of the graduate, which was developed in Farmington after a community engagement process way back in 2010. Farmington led the way in 2010, as school districts across Connecticut are just now developing their own vision of the graduate, seeing the benefits of having a vision of the graduate in Farmington. We are now working with constituencies to develop an updated vision of the graduate to align to 2030 expectations for college work and life. The "why," our core beliefs, are outlined here, and they are how we interact with one another and how we approach work with students each day. The "how" is our framework for teaching and learning. It's our instructional delivery model created by Farmington teachers and administrators, and it aligns to research on how students learn best. Our direction is our theory of action. It's a series of if-then statements directly aligned to our school and program development plans that provide a clear direction for the next level of work for all members of our school district. So the theory of action changes pretty regularly. Our vision of the graduate remains the same, but as we learn, we make adjustments in our theory of action. It helps us to remain on the cutting edge. The next few slides, I'm just going to briefly review each element of this improvement design because it is the foundation of our budget. And when you have an improvement design that provides clarity, we then are able to budget very efficiently. So this is our vision of the graduate, the "what," and it outlines the core body of knowledge and the transferable thinking and learning skills all Farmington students are required to master upon graduation. This begins in kindergarten, and we've aligned curriculum, instruction, assessment, and programming to this vision. This slide shows students. It's always important for us to see why we're here. This slide shows students actively engaged in purpose-driven, self-directed, mastery-based, and socially-constructed learning experience that are aligned to our vision of the graduate. This slide is our list of our core beliefs, the "why," expectations, effort, equity, instruction, relationships, and results matter in Farmington. The framework for teaching and learning is our instructional framework. It is considered how we actually attain our vision of the graduate. This framework ensures we deliver student-centered instruction aligned to our vision of the graduate each day in all classrooms. This is our theory of action. The "what," "how," and "why" provides clarity in our strategic improvement efforts, and they have resulted in impressive shifts in teaching, learning, and assessment, as well as outstanding outcomes. Our theory of action provides a clear and compelling direction for our improvement work to support and integrate the "what," "how," and "why" throughout the school district. It includes purpose-driven learning, socially-constructed learning, mastery-based learning, and self-directed learning, and they are all elements of our theory of action, and they do assist us in budgeting. Our improvement design is visionary, and the clarity of our strategic priorities not only ensures these priorities are implemented at the classroom level, but they're also budgeted for within our annual budget development process. The superintendent's recommended budget reflects a total budget amount of $70,843,123 with an increase of $3,134,518 or a 4.63% increase over the 2019-2020 school district budget. This slide provides another view of the 4.63% recommended budget increase for the 2020-2021 school year. Salaries, 2.05% of the 4.63% increase accounts for all contractual salaries. Benefits, 1.64% of the 4.63% increase is in the area of self-insurance, health insurance. We are experiencing higher claim trends and an increase in catastrophic claims, which requires a larger increase in self-insurance than we've typically experienced. Contracted special services, 0.56% of the 4.63% increase is due to increased student need in special services contracted professional services. Examples could be occupational therapy, physical therapy, outside evaluations, inside support of specialized programming in the area of special services. All other, 0.38% of the 4.63% are other areas, including our transportation contract, supplies, equipment, and fees. Transportation contract alone accounts for $127,513 of this other category. For a total increase over the 2019-2020 budget of $3,134,518, a 4.63% increase. So here are some of the key drivers of the budget. So the 2020-2021 recommended budget reflects a maintenance budget due to the increased costs in health insurance, special services, and ongoing shifts that we are finding in grant funding. The budget maintains academic excellence and equity through innovative programming K-12, supports students' academic and social and emotional development, provides flexible pathways for challenge and support, addresses unanticipated and ongoing shifts in grant funding, increases cybersecurity across the entire school district, contains costs through zero-based budgeting reductions and efficiencies to maintain current programming, and maintains class size in accordance with the Board of Education policy. So part of the presentation is also to celebrate all of the accomplishments, and certainly there are more that are on the next two slides, but we do have much to be proud of in Farmington. We continue to be highlighted at the regional, state, and national levels for excellence in teaching and learning and student outcomes. I will highlight a few notable accomplishments, not all of them, on this slide. FHS 11th graders are number one in Connecticut on the new NGSS statewide science assessment. This shows that we prepared our students well in the years prior to this assessment. And this is, it is many shifts in science standards, and we were well-prepared for it. FHS is nationally designated by Newsweek as a top STEM school nationally. Farmington sophomores outperform the national cohort of seniors on the college work readiness assessment, which is directly aligned to our vision of the graduate. And The Voice, FHS Student Newspaper was awarded a gold medal for excellence in student media, and for the first time ever, The Voice was awarded a crown award by Columbia Scholastic Press Association, which is the highest recognition they provide. Here are some additional notable accomplishments, and I'll highlight a few items. The first robotics program was awarded the Industrial Design Award. We also, in athletics, are Fall 2018 Girls Soccer Class L state finalists, Winter Ice Hockey Division State semifinalists, Winter 2018-2019 Boys Basketball Division State Champions, Central Connecticut Conference Champions, Girls Volleyball, Boys Basketball, Boys Lacrosse, Boys Tennis, Girls Tennis, and Softball. In New England, Mathematics League recognized FHS as a Mathematics League Regional Champion. These are just a few notable accomplishments, and please refer to our Achievements PowerPoint and Results and Outcomes booklet, which is online, for other accomplishments and through the community's investment in our schools, Farmington schools, and students continue to lead the way in education. Here are examples, just some examples, of our favorable state rankings when it comes to expenditures, and there is a relationship between the accomplishments slide and this ranking slide, excellence in education and programming, as well as fiscal responsibility and management. The rankings are based on 166 towns, with one spending the most and 166 spending the least. There has been some changes because we have a new system at the state where we look at expenditures, so there's a bit of a difference in the number of towns. But 141 out of all Connecticut school districts in purchased services, 157 out of all Connecticut districts in general administration, and that would be central office, 110 out of all Connecticut districts in instruction, 121 out of all Connecticut districts in employee benefits, and 116 in transportation. Given our outcomes coupled with our favorable expenditure rankings, here are some specific examples of how we focus each day, not just during the budget development process, but each day on cost containment and avoidance while providing a high-quality education for Farmington students. So I'll highlight three items on this slide. An update in security cameras, K-12 resulted in annual savings in our operating budget and increased safety and security. Updated features to the health insurance plans through our negotiations committee in partnership with our various associations are projected to result in cost savings and avoidance. FPS was successfully awarded multiple safety and security grants, as well as construction grants for facility projects to support school safety and programmatic improvements. This slide provides examples of the reductions during the development process of this budget, totaling over $800,000. And I do want to note that we made extensive reductions due to the volatile budget drivers in this budget to try to contain costs. The first driver of the budget is salaries, and as you can see, this accounts for 65.9% of our total budget and reflects collaborative negotiations between various associations and our Board of Education. The salary series reflects a 3.07% increase over this year's budget. You can see the various increases in each association on this slide. This slide and the next slide provide an overview of certified staffing requests for the 2020-2021 school year, and each year, we carefully study staffing levels to address needs and to find deficiencies when possible. There is a request for an additional 1.7 FTE, as well as 2.0 teachers not deployed due to enrollment. It is important to note that the two FTE teachers not deployed are within the Board's class-size policy. In the area of academic excellence and equity, there are several staffing efficiencies that, on this slide, that offset increases in FTE based on policy and student need. This was accomplished in collaboration with school leaders. Please know that we were mindful of the budget increase in making these decisions to avoid additional costs and the overall percentage increase while sustaining academic excellence and equity across schools. On this slide, you will see the proposed certified increases for social and emotional learning, which aligns directly to an increased need in social and emotional supports for students requiring special services. And flexible pathways for challenge and support, these increases are also related to increased need for students requiring special services. Again, the total FTE increase is 1.7 FTEs plus two FTEs for class-size teachers not yet deployed, which aligns to our class-size policy, for a total of 3.7 FTE increase in professional staffing. And it is important to note, as I said, that there are many efficiencies and savings that offset the overall FTE increase through zero-based budgeting efforts. For non-certified staffing, we have an increase of 0.93. This will achieve two additional FTE for paraprofessionals, which is offset by a reduction of a job coach at FHS. The second major driver is employee benefits, and this accounts for 100% of expected paid claims and in the administration of employee health insurance. Farmington's preventative care measures show best-in-class rates across almost all items. You will see life and long-term disability costs on this slide. For several months, we have experienced higher claim costs, as well as increased catastrophic claims, and given this emerging trend in higher claim costs, there is a larger increase in this account. The Employee Benefits Series accounts for 16.49% of our total budget. There is a 10.49% increase in this account. According to Cigna, our healthcare provider, health insurance trends are trending 12% to 15%, so even with the increase, we are trending at average in health insurance cost trends, which is unfortunately higher than we've experienced over the past several years. The Services Series includes varied items. This series accounts for 14.09% of the total budget. It reflects a 6.81% increase. It also reflects a commitment to providing excellent programming for students requiring special services. The increase in this series is across several objects. Two specific examples of increases in this line would be our transportation contract for transportation of Farmington students requiring bus transportation in town, as well as special services, contracted services based on increased student need. The 300 series also includes major facility projects within the operating budget. I just want to say a few words about that. So FHS, as everyone knows, remains a critical facility need for the school district. So we did include the FHS statement of need in the budget book, as this is a significant and urgent facility need. And please know, we deeply appreciate the hard work and dedication of our Farmington High School Building Committee in addressing the FHS statement of need, as well as the collaboration between the Board of Education, Town Council, and our community in developing a comprehensive solution to addressing the needs of the FHS facility. And as a reminder, the FHS Building Committee's recent recommendation of a "build new conceptual option to move forward to schematic design" will be presented to the Town Council at their February 4th meeting for their consideration. In addition, we are continuing to implement the recommendations of our comprehensive K-8 2018 Facility Assessment. We now have both short-term and long-term facility recommendations for our six other facilities. The information in each of the K-8 Facility Assessment reports inform our annual capital budget, as well as our annual major facility projects in the Services Series in the operating budget. In Farmington, our mission and improvement design have been and continue to be clear, compelling, and reflect a tradition of leading the way in education. Now we have a clear and comprehensive plan to improve and align our facilities to our mission and improvement design. The Supply Series reflects a 1.45% increase or a $25,975 increase. The 400 series accounts for 2.67% of the total budget. The increase here was offset by several reductions in this series. It's important to note, this account provides for facilities used in swimming and ice hockey competitions, and for the purchase of a wide range of items such as instructional health, custodial computer, and testing supplies. The next slide reflects the budget level for Equipment Series, which accounts for 0.50% of the total budget. The Series reflects equipment requests. There is a 10.66% decrease in this particular account for equipment. This slide shows the progression over several years, including the upcoming school year of providing technology access for all students to support student-centered teaching and learning aligned to the priorities outlined in our theory of action, our mission, and improvement design. We should be very proud of our collective strategic planning in the area of technology. The 2020-2021 budget, we are proposing a transition to a true Chromebook take-home one-to-one approach in grades K through 12. I'm sorry, 5 through 12. Here are some, several examples of how the school district has focused on strategic cost allocation and excellence within programming in the technology area, as well as in the Equipment Series. I'll highlight two items from this slide to illustrate our strategic approach. Continuous improvement in network security and policies to ensure business continuity and protection from cybersecurity attacks, and continuous monitoring of our energy conservation utility to monitor computer power consumption aided by replacement of inefficient hardware. The Dues and Fees Series is the last series. It reflects a 0.35% of the total budget with a 5.9% increase. This includes memberships to organizations and liability and property insurance. The next slide is an overview of the major budget drivers that reflect a 4.63% increase over the 2019-2020 school district budget, all of which I reviewed within this presentation. The 2020-2021 recommended budget is a maintenance budget that supports all students to achieve academic and personal excellence, exhibit persistent effort, and live as resourceful, inquiring, and contributing global citizens. Farmington continues a tradition of leading the way in excellence in teaching and learning, as well as student outcomes, achievements, and in the area of operations. Our financial plan supports these efforts. We have taken a long-term and highly effective approach to cost containment, avoidance, and savings, so that resources are aligned directly to our mission and improvement design at the student level. As you know, the 2019-2020 budget has been challenging, and the challenges we are facing in this year's budget have made the development of the 2020-2021 budget more complex. Although this is the case, it does not deter us from providing a student-centered nurturing learning environment that is purpose-driven, self-directed, mastery-based, with a commitment to socially-constructed learning. We take great pride in implementing a strategic approach to improvement with an eye on cost containment through collaborative negotiations, partnerships, ongoing reviews of programming, facilities, and staffing to realize efficiencies, knowing that it is essential to do so on behalf of our students and the taxpayers of Farmington, especially with the increased costs we are experiencing in some of our most volatile budget drivers like health insurance and special services. We approach budget development and management through a collaborative approach with all members of our school district community, seeking out new and innovative approaches that will contain or reduce costs over time while ensuring excellence in all that we do. The clarity in our improvement design greatly assists in systems alignment, including resource allocation and implementation of strategic improvement priorities by all members of our school district community. And as I stated, this is a particularly challenging budget year. The 2019-2020 budget year trends in special services, health insurance, and shifts in grant funding have had a significant impact on the 2020-2021 budget. We work diligently with our school and program leaders to minimize the significant cost increases we are experiencing through reductions, cost containment, and avoidance. It is important to note that we are ranked 103 in our per-pupil spending out of 166 districts, with one spending the most and 166 spending the least. Per pupil, we spend $1,620 less than the state average per student, and we rank 14 out of 19 in DIRG-B, the districts we compare ourselves to, per pupil spending. This amounts to millions of dollars less in our budget compared to other school districts' budgets and school districts that we compare ourselves to. Yet our student, faculty, school, and districts' accomplishments, continuous improvement efforts, rigorous curriculum, and high-quality programming have contributed to a nationally-recognized education here in Farmington at a lower cost. Although this is a maintenance budget, we will continue to provide excellence in education and social and emotional learning for all of our students. The recommended 2021 budget is responsive to our community and to our students. The next generation of pioneers, scholars, contributors, and citizens, they will one day lead the way, and each of us will take pride in knowing that we all contributed to their individual and collective success. We look forward to presenting this budget in more detail to the Board of Education and community today.
At this time, Alicia Bowman is going to give us an overview of the budget book.
Good morning, everyone. So in addition to the budget book, you also received multiple handouts and packets. Some are familiar documents that we've... Some are familiar documents that we've previously reviewed at other Board of Ed meetings, the Special Services Budget you have a copy of, our preliminary staffing report. We provided a question-and-answer document based on frequently asked questions. There is a overview of the Technology Budget, capital projects, and major projects. So some of these, most have already been presented, and with one remaining. So any questions about those? And then, as far as the budget booklet itself, you know, as we say in our Budget Development Manual way back when we passed that out, this is really a strategic planning document, and it's an opportunity to work collaboratively, both as an administrative group and as a Board of Education. So if you, to walk you through the document, it starts with an introduction, and those are our familiar documents you've seen before. But the last page of the, within the Introduction section, page six, you'll see is a budget summary. So those are the counts rolled up at the highest level. And each of those accounts that you see on that page, so starting with central office, principals, all the way down, each of those will have a page within the booklet that gives more detail. So it'll have, they'll be found in the appropriate section. So for example, salary counts will be under salary, and then, within that, you'll see what percentage of the budget it is. You will see detail as far as what the goal of that account is. And then, at the end of each section, you'll see a breakdown or further explanation of that series as well. So it goes, each section, we'll walk through each one, but we will, you'll see the dollar amount, you will see what was expended, what was approved last year, what we're requesting, and what the percent change is. And then, we will share with you what the goal is of that account, and we'll work through the entire book. At the end of the book, you'll see some different data and projections that we have provided to you previously, but there's enrollment, comparative data, like some of the things Kathy just shared, how we compare ourselves to other schools in our DIRG, as well as schools across the state, salary schedules that come from our different bargaining groups, and then, other in-kind services information regarding those. So at the back is just supporting detail to how we come to this budget booklet. I'm not sure if anyone has any specific questions before we walk through it about how to read it, or question? Yeah, I'm good, unless anyone has any additional questions.
Thanks, Alicia. So at this time, Kim Nguyen will be giving an overview of curriculum initiatives, professional development, personal, professional staffing.
We'll start, I'll start, and then I'll hand it over to Kim. Just so, we're going to start with the salaries section, and as I said, I put the salary slide up there because it is important for all of you to see the various negotiated increases for next year, just so that you have that in mind as you look at this. But it does account for 65.9% of our total budget. So this is, you know, a major budget driver. And we do see a 3.07% increase in this particular series. And if we go to page one, do we want to start with a motion for this page, and then I tentatively approve, and then we'll explain some of the reasons why, you know, there might be an increase or a decrease.
Good question, Kathy. Perhaps maybe we can explain to some of the new members, like, how we go about doing it?
Sure. So what we do is, we go page by page, and we tentatively approve each page. It doesn't mean that it is a final approval, because what we're doing is providing the information, you do the tentative approval, you may have questions, we may have answers to those questions immediately, or we may need to work on those answers when we get, you know, to our next meeting, which is on Monday. So you tentatively approve it, we have discussion about it, give information about why it might be a higher level than, you know, we expected, or an increase, a larger increase. But some pages will have decreases, and we will explain that as well.
Okay, so you're good here, and here, and we're starting here?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, okay. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page one, central office salaries in the amount of $589,592?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
So this particular page has an increase, this is central office, this includes central office administrators, and it has an increase of 8.29%, and $30,000, so that's $45,111. $30,000 is a restructuring. There was no FTE increase, but we did restructure, as you know, central office, and now we have an Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and an Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. We did not increase FTE, it was just an increase in overall salary. So that's where we see the change.
Any questions for, at this point? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Need a motion to tentatively approve page two, principals in the amount of $2,290,741. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
This accounts for all our school-based leaders in Farmington. We actually, because we had a lot of transition this year of leadership, there was a savings this year of about $30,000 in this account. So it would be a much higher increase that you would be seeing. And so, you know, that, you know, that's the overview, but they have a 2.25% general wage increase for next year.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page five, teachers' salaries in the amount of $32,659,183?
Motion.
Second.
So there's a 2.67% increase here, and the teacher's contract for a GWI is only on the top step, and then I'll explain a little variation on that. So it's a 1.75% GWI for teachers on the top step only. And then, because during the negotiations process, there was a flatlining of the bachelor's degree steps, there was a negotiation to also provide a 1.75% GWI for the bachelor step, only step seven through 11, because those were the ones that were, did not have an increase in it. So that was negotiated, so the 2.67 also includes that. Let's see, this includes the, what I mentioned on the slide, I can show you as far as increases. There's a 1.7 FTE increase overall. We had many efficiencies that we found to offset this, but 2.0 FTE for unassigned or not deployed teachers, all within our Board of Education class-size policy. But what are some of the things that, you know, we're hoping to accomplish? Kim presented this on Monday, so we have a very clear list on our slides. Many of the items that we're trying to accomplish are in the area of special services because of increased need. I will say right now, we've had three retirements that are not yet accounted for in this budget, so we can reduce this particular page by $95,752 for the three retirements. We can also, we have an efficiency in library that is not here, which is a .2. We can also reduce this by $13,213. There's going to be another part of this budget that we have to increase, because when people retire, they, per contract, have a retirement stipend. So we will be increasing on another page, we can wait until then to increase that page, but I just want you to know that, yes, we reduce this page, because we will be hiring individuals that have less experience than a retired teacher, so we get to have some efficiencies here. However, we also have to increase another page, because in the contract, there are retirement stipends.
Kathy, can you just say that again? The $98,000 for the three retirements, and how much for the...
Oh, no, $95,752 for the three retirements we received this week that were not in the budget, and another $13,213 for library. So Beth can give us the amount that would, it would change from the 8.49.
So the total is $32,550,218. The increase would be $740,047, 2.33%.
On this, on this account?
That's including the, putting it back in, did she do, put it back into the retirement?
That'd be in another spot.
I'm not going to write that down till we get a good...
Yeah. Do you want to say it one more time?
Yeah, one more time.
This page only is changing to $32,550,218. It makes the increase on this page $740,047.
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two.
And the increase on this page, 2.33%.
Thank you. Someone want to make a motion?
Actually, I have a question, too. What's the value of a full FTE?
You have that.
So we've been using 66, 66, 6. Or 66, oh, 6.
Yes.
I knew I had a lot of 6s.
$66.
60.67.
If you're going to round up. But yes, that's what we've been, yes.
I know, I know.
My Catholic faith.
I know.
Someone want to make a motion?
Motion. I think we just got to call a question.
We have to change that.
Oh, we have to change it. Motion to change the budget. I'll move to change that page to reflect a new number.
That's good.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Beth, you got us covered. Anything else in teacher salaries? Did we vote on the motion to change it? We just did that, right?
Usually, I think we say the amount, don't we, Mary?
Yeah, yeah. We should, so everyone, yeah.
Yeah. A motion.
We have to say.
Well, we could say as amended. That's fine. Yeah. Okay.
Then, motion to approve, and then I'll withdraw, well, it's already been done, but I'll, just to clarify it, I'll move to approve page...
Five.
Five, as amended pursuant to staff comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we had a motion on the table for the entire, but that takes care of the entire page now?
Yeah.
Okay, great, okay. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page six, directors in the amount of $838,213?
Motion.
So directors, I include our Director of Human Resources, our Athletic Director, Director of Technology, Director of Facilities, Excel. Those are some, just so that you know, they're non-affiliated positions. We do have a reserve for new negotiations within this account. So when we get to nurses, you won't see an increase, because we're negotiating in the coming year.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page seven, advisors, coaches in the amount of $517,727? Motion?
Motion.
So you can see the description on this page. It's our coaching salaries for our comprehensive co-curricular programs, sports, artistic, and other enriching activities. As you also can see on this page, we are proposing, and it is in this budget, an increase in pay-to-participate of, from $100 a sport to $125 a sport, and a family cap of $500 instead of $400. This, the amount per sport in overall was our original amount that we used when we first moved to pay-to-participate, and then we were able to lower that. Given costs, we have to, you know, we are proposing to increase that fee. And the teacher contract includes a 1.25% increase for coaching and advisory stipends that are limited to Appendix C of the FEA contract.
What does that, what does Appendix C say?
It lists the exact areas.
And I think that's in, yeah, it's actually in. One of the back pages. If you go to section, salary schedule, you'll see the different positions. So think of all high school athletics, many of the clubs.
Why is the count being reduced by 4.33?
Because of our athletic trainer has left, and we are hiring an athletic trainer. It's like, when we have a retirement, we're at, you know, we're adding someone at a lower rate, yes.
You know, just as a footnote, I remember when we, maybe six or seven years ago, when we installed, you know, installed the pay-to-participate, I remember the discussion being, it's not going to go down, it's going to go up. There was, and so it's just something to keep in mind when we make decisions like that, once we get something on the table, like the pay-to-participate. We knew that it was going to stay on the table and probably increase at some point. We've been able to keep it down for quite many years, which I think is admirable, and we still have in place assistance for families.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for, on page seven? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, okay. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page eight, teacher substitutes in the amount of $595,519?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So there's a 4.84% increase, and it's, it really is about a legislative mandate that we have. So we, due to recent legislation on minimum wage, we have to get there in the next three years. So we're slowly building the account to meet that mandate.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I have a motion to, oops, tentatively approve page nine, tutors in the amount of
Motion.
Second? Don't do that anymore. Discussion.
So this has a large increase in tutors, 29.31%, or $81,130. This, when I was saying that there are some shifts in grant funding, this is where there was a shift. So overall, I'll go back to just in, for tutors, it's a 2% GWI increase, but there are additional FTE in here that, it actually occurred this year. In the year before this year, FHS was a Title I school, and it is not this year. So we had tutors on that grant, and we had to pull those tutors into our operating budget. So just, so you know, it's an unusual increase, but it has to do with shifts and grant funding that we're experiencing.
Any questions for Kathy?
Is this also a reflection of in previous years, maybe not fully appreciating that cost with respect to grant reimbursement? And we've kind of updated our understanding of that, or just only because this is the new year?
Every, every year, it could be different schools, depending on the demographics of each school, so it's unknown year to year. And it could be that another school, it could be that, you know, we have our Title I schools, and we have one less, or we have one more. When FHS became a Title I, we were surprised by that, and we were able to shift some money off the operating budget, place it on this grant, but then, when the grant goes away at times, we then have to shift back to the operating budget, so.
And just for the record, with a Title I... And just for the record, was it Title I school?
Oh, Title I schools.
Uh, Title I schools relate to the free and reduced lunch population of students, and it's really focused on providing academic support, most typically in literacy-focused areas.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 10, aides instructional support personnel in the amount of $3,036,103,36,130?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So this reflects a 2.0% contract increase, GWI contract increase. We do see on this slide additional FTE that you'll see here. And any other drivers besides that? Not for this one, no.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 11, office personnel in the amount of
Motion.
Discussion.
This, again, is a 2% contract increase for office personnel, but no increases in FTE.
Any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carries. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 12, nurses services in the amount of
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So as I mentioned earlier in the director's line, that's where we have reserved funding for negotiations. So you see a 0% increase, zero dollar amount, but that is because we will be negotiating this summer.
More to come.
Yes, more to come, yeah.
Any questions for Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 13, cafeteria, security monitors, drivers in the amount of $579,551?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
This is a 1.84% increase. They will have a 2% GWI. I'm mentioning this just because we get lots of questions. The increase is offset at the high school by parking fees. So parking fees at FHS, we actually pay for two FTE of monitors through that. So I just want you to know that it's not really the total amount. We do have an offset because of that fee that we, we charge to students who want to park here, park at the high school. It's off, it's just a question we get.
It is a question we get a lot. I was going to say that, yeah. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to tentatively approve page 14, custodial services in the amount of $2,458,021?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So, again, a 2% GWI for our custodians. It is important to note that we also have an amount in here of $30,000 for custodial overtime. And that was, it was an excellent agreement that we made with the town. The town had a, a facility that was vacant. We were in need of another space for our Farmington Alternative High School. We had a larger rental fee than this $30,000, so we were able to save money year after year because of this agreement. But instead of having the town pay us for their custodial overtime for park and rec, we have that here, and it also serves as a rental fee for the facility that we now have our alternative high school in, which is a much, it's a much larger space for our students. And we also use that same facility at night for robotics because we lost our robotics site. So it's just a win-win-win all around, but it does speak to our partnership with our town, so.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay. So we are done with salaries, tentatively approving salaries, so we'll move to benefits. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 16, employee, oh, employee benefit health insurance in the amount of $9,505,217? Now I'm finished.
I'm not going to do it.
I'm writing it down now.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
So this is a 12.81, if, I really need glasses, 81% increase. And it, as I had said during my presentation, we are experiencing claim, higher claim trends and a series of catastrophic claims. We, we do have a September renewal instead of a July renewal, and we did that when we transitioned to an HSA, a high deductible HSA. That does make it a little more challenging for us when we're trying to budget so far in advance. You know, we, we did that for other reasons that were very important reasons, to shift from a July renewal to a September renewal. But I, I just say that this is a very volatile account, that it can be unpredictable. And so, you know, I just want to say that as we look at it again, claim, insurance is trending 12 to 15% according to Cigna, and we're, we are close to 13%. So we're within that average, but, you know, we just want, this one is a tough one for us, for this particular budget, because it accounts for a lot, you know, the reason why we have the increase we have, so.
Any questions for Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 19, life insurance, LDT and other in the amount of $242,045?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is a 2.11% increase. We are flat due to our finance director on the town side, Joe's good work, so the flat in life, a slight decrease in long-term disability. And really, the driver is, within our contracts, we do have tax-sheltered annuities and, you know, that, that's the, really accounts for the increase.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Can I have a motion to approve page 20, FICA slash Medicare in the amount of $1,398,205?
Motion.
Discussion.
So this is an increase we, we're going to continue to see year after year because, you know, before April 16th, 1986, we did not have to provide this. Now we do. And as we hire new people and others retire, you know, that, that increase happens year after year.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 21, retirement contributions in the amount of $196,179? This is where we...
This is the page that we have to add back.
Motion.
$29,700.
Okay. May I have a motion?
Beth moved it.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. Discussion.
So we, we would need to get the new amount from Beth once she adds that back in so we can update the motion or say as amended.
The new total is $1,427,935.
Can you, no.
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 Oh, I'm sorry.
What?
We're in trouble.
Tell them to stay.
Thank you, Beth. Okay.
Kathy, can you repeat the dollar change?
Yeah, we, we need all, all the way through, so it's overall...
Yep, so then the overall increase is $456 and a 0.2% increase.
It was 29.7, right?
It was 12,97 decrease to a 0.2 increase. Okay.
And we will get, for new board, we will get new pages to, to put into our books.
At some point, we're going to want another overall reduction.
Yeah.
Right? Because that's, it's not a dollar-for-dollar offset.
Yeah.
What do you mean?
I want to know with, because so with staffing reductions, it was about $95,000 with the three retirements, plus 13,000 and change for the library.
You took out 110 or so.
Took out, took out about 100, right.
Oh, yeah, yeah. The bottom line.
And you're, and you're putting back only 400, well, no more than that. You're putting in probably another 29,000.
Yes, yes.
We used to do that ongoing, too. I don't know. We used to do that ongoing.
That's correct. We don't have to, I don't think we need to.
Yeah, so overall, if, adding in and taking away, what was the overall reduction in the budget?
What's the new?
$9,265. Then your new percentage increase is 4.5.
4.5. Good work, everyone. Beautiful. Great job.
It's only 10 o'clock.
The day is still early. Okay, so can I, oh, so we're all set.
It's only 10 o'clock. Look what we've done.
So, so can I get a motion to tentatively approve page 21, retirement contributions in the amount of $225,879? Is that okay? As amended?
Eight. Eight hundred seventy-nine dollars.
Eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. Two...
Motion.
Two, well, make sure you're not, don't like the number.
25879.
Right. That's what I had?
Yep, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. I have a motion to tentatively approve page 22, unemployment insurance in the amount of $37,230?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So this reflects current unemployment. If we were to make reductions in staffing, just know that this line, staffing goes down, but this line goes up. So I just want to point that out as we continue through the budget process.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 23, workers' compensation in the amount of $303,764?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
This is flat, and this provides workers' compensation insurance for all FPS employees.
Questions?
That's actually pretty cool that it hasn't gone up.
Mm-hmm. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 24, other employee benefits in the amount of $2,200?
Motion.
This is, I think our...
I need a second.
Second.
Discussion.
This is our favorite page. The pair of safety shoes for each of our custodians, and we're, it's flat. It's a flat account.
Next year, it's going to be...
We always think...
A pair of pumps for the administrative team.
But we always think, you know...
Safety pumps.
How did this...
And that will be thinking. Doing it right.
That's right. We should replace the page with a photo of that. I'd like to see.
You just wonder how these accounts, you know, how that received a full page, you know. But anyway.
Somebody could not figure out where. That's okay.
All right. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay. So now we are finished with benefits. We'll move on to our services account. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 25, summer teachers in the amount of $460,100?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is a large increase. $58,500 of the increase is special services summer school because of increased need. You can see that we, we're, we have many different aspects of summer school here. On the non-special education side, certainly ELL needs and increased need in the district accounts for the other increase in summer school, which is non-special education. I will be very specific with this. $12,654.73 is the non-special education increase.
Say that again.
So you have, you know, you have an idea of what the driver is of this, the drivers are of this increase. The, the non-special education, $12,654.73.
Oh, that's 71,155.
Of the 71,155, and the rest is special services.
That's of the increase, not the total.
And just, you know, just special services is required by law, so, you know, for students who require ESY. It is not for every student. It's students who are identified as students that are in need of that through the PPT process.
Including transportation.
Right, right.
Can I ask a question? And I don't need this answer right now, but, so of the overall 460,100 request, how much of that is non-special ed?
Can you repeat that?
Of the overall request of 460,100, how much of that is special ed? Or not?
Or not special ed.
Non-special ed.
Non-special ed, sorry.
Is approximately 160,000.
Thank you.
And that is summer learning that includes students K to 8. Yeah, K to 8 is important because FHS is credit recovery. It's very, so that is outside of the 160,000.
Can I ask a question? Are there any summer school programs or classes for the high school that are not credit recovery?
Enrichment?
Yes, but students pay for them.
They pay for them.
Yes.
Anything enrichment would be a pay-to-participate type.
I have a question. Is, so if 160K of the request is gen ed, does that mean that the 300K approximately, is that all mandated special services?
There's a piece of FHS summer school in there that we could get the amount, so I don't want to say...
I think it's approximately 15,000, which is high school, but other than that, yes.
So all of the, all of the 300K would be, is all required? Okay.
Right. I wouldn't want to mess with credit recovery.
No, no, because that's graduation and...
No, right. That's what I want to...
Right.
Yeah. So i- is there a desire of the board in certain areas, we're in services now, to start making some questions of what is gen ed? What is special ed unmandated services to see some breakout since this is, we are in a very tough budget year?
I'm not so sure I want to see that now. I'd probably have some questions for Monday night.
Right.
About...
But it would be something they could bring back. We don't have that, that information.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I'm not in a hurry to see it now, and I'm not sure it's even a place I'm willing to go. I just wanted, I, I do think it's important for us to understand the breakdown of mandate versus non-mandate.
Well, we do have a slide that we prepared. We thought we would probably receive this question.
All right.
And I, Beth does have a slide that provides, you know, information on overall, what's, what is contracted? You know, what are fixed con, you know, contractual increases? What increases are specific to special education? And then what is other than that?[1723.11] And then what is other than that? And so we did, I did receive a question, so we wanted to prepare it so we could answer that question. And it may be, or maybe not, what you're asking for, so let's see.
Oh, thank you.
And this is specifically of the 4.63% increase. So when you look at what has increased this year, and, you know, what are the drivers of the increase? You can see in special services, of the 4.63% increase, .89%, or $603,850, really is specific to special education. Contractual, all others, includes salaries, benefits, transportation. That's 3.60 of the 4.63%. I think that's important to note because of the specific drivers we have, just to bring everything forward, of that 4.63%, it's that, that particular area is 3.6 of it. And then any other, anything else not included above, is .14% or $92,662. So it's a very small amount that is other, that is not contractual and not related to special services increases. Is that what you were looking for?
Not specifically as it is to this account or it is to the overall budget item about services. That, I mean, this is helpful, certainly, in terms of an overall, because that's going to lead to my next question that, or my next observation, that any significant cuts are going to be programmatic.
They're all, I would say that-
Whatever, so if we're going to get to under 30%-
It would be programmatic. That's-
Programmatic cuts.
Right. Given what's been already reduced, we really looked at this budget very carefully because we knew of the budget drivers were significant. And so we did, as you did see, and where did we reduce, there are significant reductions already. Now we're at a point of, this is, we're going to have to make programmatic changes.
Right.
Or, you know, find efficiencies that will change the way we're delivering. So it could be that more teachers are traveling or, you know, that type of thing. So it definitely is programmatic and staffing.
Right.
Related, yeah.
That was the next thing I was going to say.
Yes.
Liz?
So my question regarding, I mean, this is very helpful, and I appreciate it, but I have a question now more to the $603,850, and I don't need the answer now, but for Monday night, I'd like to know of this $603,850, how much of that is, are earmarked like for mandates that are from the state? So how much of that money, or how much of those dollars are, like, if we did not fully fund the request from special services, would be, then we wouldn't be fulfilling mandates? Like, how, you know, if that request wasn't fully funded, would we be, obviously, we have to fulfill mandates. So, like, that's the question, I guess. Would we be able to not fully fund a request from special services and still be fulfilling all of the mandates? And I guess-
So what's mandatory versus what's non-mandatory?
Right, exactly. And that's not ideal, but I mean, we're looking, if we're looking to make hard choices, we need to know what's available to us within that hard choices bucket.
Hundred percent.
So, you know, I, everyone's going to have to be available within that bucket, I guess. Every, every division of the, the school system, so, you know, we need to know. You know, we need to know what's a mandate and what's not, so. And then I guess also, I'd like to know from Lori and from, from you, Kathy, you know, what your ideas are within that request of the $603,850. What choices you, you know, you and Lori would make if any could be pushed off or if there are any switches that could be made, you know, within the budget? You know, what Lori and you think would be a viable option?
Okay.
It's telling, too, that we've gone from having, we have no one assigned reg ed, regular ed.
We have two.
Oh, two, okay, okay. Okay. Thank you, Liz. Anything else? And all set? Okay. All right.
Did we vote on this?
No, I'm going to do that now, so, okay. We are summer teachers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 26 Public Relations Services in the amount of $51,620?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
It's a slight increase of $200. We do have a, we had a SEPTO. This is special education PTO. We didn't have it for several years, and now it's back. So, you know, special services put some funding in just for meetings and things like that into their budget.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 27 Student Services in the amount of $45,564?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So it is a 9.45% increase. I will say that I, although not mandated, as we know, in recent weeks, very, very important for our students. So 2,000 of that is an internet safety program at FHS, one for students, one for parents. We probably would include other schools in that, but that's an outside speaker that comes in who's excellent. And so we find, we feel this is very, very important, given our current context and for the safety of our students. And there's also in there FHS transitions and assemblies. FHS has really done a nice job in enhancing transition to FHS team building, and that accounts for some of the other increases there so that there can be a more exciting transition to the high school and more team building that goes on. So that's, accounts for the increases.
Any questions?
I have one.
Beth?
So is this where Good Start would be? I saw K-12 orientation programs. Would that include Good Start?
No, I think-
Doesn't.
Good Start is in a different- Okay.
But this is transitions between all schools, so elementary to Westwoods, Westwood-Sierra. Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
And commencement, commencement.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 28 Other Student Services in the amount of $66,825?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So this, this decrease reflects a decrease in unified theater because we haven't seen that funding be utilized. So we, you know, in our quest for efficiencies and reductions, that is why this account is lower.
Is that because we don't have a staff member to do it, or there's, there's no interest? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 29 Professional Education Services in the amount of $738,044?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So this was an area that you did see when Lori presented as a budget driver, and it's driven by consultations, independent evaluation, occupational therapy, supports to our specialized programming in the area of special education.
Any questions?
Again, kind of similar to the questions we had earlier. So there's an overall expenditure in this account of $738,044. How much of that is driven by special ed? How much of it is not? Because if you look at the next page, there are Pages 30 and 31, some of it is special ed oriented, certainly. Some of it does not appear to be. So I just kind of want to understand, like, of the, of that line item, the $738 number, what's special ed, what's not?
Okay.
I had a similar question. So the curriculum, it looks like most of the curriculum is in here?
Yeah, Kim, Kim can go over that. This is time for Kim to just go over the pages, so. So the, this does include the K to 12 curriculum budget. And on Pages, Pages 30 and 31, you see the specific curriculum projects that have been proposed by department leaders, resource teachers and principals, and then vetted at Central Office by myself and Veronica Ruzek. The curriculum budget includes also stipends for teachers to serve on vertical teams as well as summer curriculum academies, the trainers for those academies. So generally, this is a budget that shifts a bit every year. This year's budget is right in line with the dollar amount of last year's budget, so no significant increase or decrease. And the board has a curriculum committee that will sit with me and Veronica to go over these specific projects programmatically to better understand why they're here on the page.
Just a question. You said there's no significant increase. The, the line item itself has increased 45%. So when you say no significant increase, you're talking about the curriculum subset of this?
Correct.
I understand. And so the 45% increase that exists here really reflects the concerns we have with special ed and, and all that stuff.
Well, that's why, yeah, I, I was highlighting just the increases, not everything that's in there.
Of course, right.
But it's being driven by consultation in the area of special services, yeah.
And then this is where we can talk about, you know, and I know Lori talked about this, Noah Wallace, where you have, you know, the in-house kind of consultations versus the outside consultations, the neuropsychological evaluations that we have to pay for in this account?
I believe so. I believe, I mean, I would also say, if you look at the description, this is an area that we offset by Medicaid revenue. Don't we also, Beth, offset by excess costs, this area too? Or no? Yes?
Uh, not this.
Not this one?
Not this. Sorry.
I thought-
Medicaid only.
Just Medicaid only, okay. So that's just important to note that there are, there's some revenue that is applied to this account to reduce it.
And I guess my next question would be then is if we, if we did go to this account, would that impact our ability to obtain that Medicaid revenue? In other words, if we wind up cutting something out of this account, would it disqualify us from being able to get any kind of grants?
No.
Okay, all right.
Part of the increase that is special ed is $224,770.
So of that $229,000 increase, 200 and how much?
$224,770.
224 special ed. Okay.
All set, Bill?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 32 Supporting Educational Services in the amount of $27,015?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So zero-based budgeting throughout, but this is an example of that. So this is funding parent and guardian outreach programs. This is where Good Start is. If anyone went, and I know some of you did go to Pi Dea, you'll see, you know, funding for that as well. And some funds for programming at FHS for the summer, Kim, as well in this account? Is this the credit recovery, or? No, I don't believe credit recovery is in here. No.
Any questions?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 33 Professional Employee Training and Development in the amount of $184,055?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So there's a slight decrease of $2,742. I will say that this is always a zero-based budgeting. However, it's really critical that we not reduce this line because we haven't, because of our current budget, we have put a hold on a lot of professional development, and that would mean two years in a row. And that would be really problematic for us. So we're doing, you know, a, a hold on a lot of professional development to address the budget this year. To do that two years in a row would be very problematic for us.
It's just another example of that we have already and continue to pull in the bootstraps.
Yep, yes.
Quite honestly, we do that already. All right, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, opposed? Carrie's. Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve Page 34 Other Professional Services in the amount of $246,788?
Motion. Second.
Carri- Discussion.
So there is a decrease here, zero-based budgeting, but also we are not, we negotiated last year with teachers, and because the negotiations this summer, we anticipate to be less when it comes to legal fees. So that's where you see this budget efficiency.
Any questions?
I have one question.
Christine? Take your time.
So Page 29, we include occupational therapy, student evaluations, consultations. In this line item, it looks like we have physical therapy. Why would we have that separate from those others?
Just the way the accounts play out, right?
Just the way they're assigned, okay.
Yeah, because these are accounts that were created well before-
Got it.
All of us. So, you know, it, at times, we do correct an account, and you'll see it in a budget, and we explain it. This is probably an area we would look at saying, does that really belong here? So it's a good point, Christine, and we should probably think about that as we-
It's not critical.
Go forward, yes.
Just curious why you would have them separated. It's a good point. Got it.
You all set, Christine?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. To tent, I need a motion to tentatively approve Page 35 Data Processing Services in the amount of $348,444.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So there's a $14,896 increase, 4.47. Matt is here. He can provide a quick summary.
This ties back, there was a technology document that we provided to, and it was an update we provided that reflects any of the cuts that we made when Kathy reviewed. That ties to Lines 1 and 2, website and data processing, which accounts for $322,000 of that total amount. The increase we saw on the technology side was about $20,000. So there's a couple of other smaller accounts that, that are in here as well, but that, that is the overall impact.
I will, because I have an issue with mandated training, and I served on a committee about this, and I met with a legislator this week about it, and we talked about it at our Monday meeting. We have had to purchase a system just to address the mandated training. That is an additional cost for districts. That doesn't even account for all the hours-
Right.
-that our faculty and staff are having to take away from teaching and learning or professional development that's around our strategic improvement to do state mandated training. So I would just say that it's a big issue in our school districts across Connecticut, and every, almost, I won't say every, but almost every legislative session, there are more mandated trainings. And we're facing one for next year. That's a two, an additional two-hour training that, you know, we just are, are struggling with this, and we're not alone in that. Every district is. But I, I just want to say that, you know, every mandate has a price, a cost to school districts, whether it's in staffing or a new system that we need to purchase for that.
Kind of one additional note, and this came up this week. A lot of the applications that we're using are just like us. They're moving to cloud servers. So things that we would typically, in the past, we posted here in the dentures on our equipment, were being pushed to move to their cloud server. In some cases, it's a cost efficiency. One that came up this week was our time clock system. What we use for clocking in and clocking out our non-certified staff, we currently spend about $2,000 a year to maintain that system in-house. They're sunsetting with the on-premise system and forcing everybody to a cloud solution at the cost of about $15,000 a year to us. So that will be coming next year if we choose to keep that system. I'm starting, at this point, I'm now starting to look at, okay, what else we have available. But that's an example of what we're seeing, even with existing stuff as well, that those services, those applications, those efficiencies are still coming at a, at a cost.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions for Matt? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to approve Page, to tentatively approve Page 36 Water in the amount of $46,635? Which is reminding me, we'll break soon before we get into, but I think my plan is before we get into building repair. Okay. Discussion.
We could probably just approve this one, actually. Probably we're right.
No rationale for this one. No rationale for this one. Zero, no increase.
Does anyone have a problem with water? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 37, sewer charge in the amount of $20,165? Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
Zero-based budgeting and our work with the town of Farmington, and Tim Harris is working on this, so.
Any questions?
Bit of inefficiency.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 38, disposal services in the amount of $76,786? Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
So this is our trash removal, and you can, you know, it's a slight increase.
Any questions?
I actually have a question. Are we under the same contract with the town? Does it, are we separate from other town buildings or residents? In other words, is this?
I would have to check with Tim. It's a question I can
I'm just curious.
Yep. It's a good question.
How about a 10-minute break before we get into equipment repair?
Do you want to finish that, and we'll just vote on that?
Oh, let's vote on it, I'm sorry, yeah. All in favor? Oh, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay, we'll take 10 minutes, everyone. Okay, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 39, equipment repair in the amount of $137,005? Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
So it's a slight increase, zero-based budgeting. We, basically, it provides maintenance and repairs for equipment in several areas. And if there are any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 40, building repair in-house in the amount of $331,203? Motion?
Second.
So there are, there is an increase of $5,626, just note to self, I'm getting, need glasses, or 1.73 percent increase. And basically, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I wrote down, East Farms and Noah Wallace elevator repair is increasing, and storage at East Farms, we do have a project there this summer, which will require some storage. I believe those are the three areas.
Any questions for Kathy? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 41, building repair contractors in the amount of $140,608? Motion?
Second.
Discussion?
So the increase is about, has to do with window washing, I believe, at each of our schools. So there's an increase in there for that.
Any questions?
Kathy, is it just the, is it that they're charging more? That's what the increase is?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yep, mhm, in the contractor price.
You all set, Andrea?
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 42, building repair projects in the amount of $236,984? Hello?
Motion?
I just took a break.
Who was the second on that?
I did the second.
Thank you.
So this directly aligns to our K8 facility review, and we, you know, we have projects that you will see on the pages that follow that are very specific. We do have a PowerPoint just to go over the major facility projects. I reference those in my PowerPoint presentation. There is a decrease because we do zero-based budget. I know we made some reductions to this line, $19,715 decrease, or 7.68 percent decrease. So right now, Alicia will go over the major projects by school so that you're aware of what's in the budget. She has
Sorry, the remote.
Oh, yes, you need that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so as Kathy said, we do similar process to what we described with the capital budget. We meet at all the school sites with the school principals and their custodial staff. We look at the K8 facilities review report and prioritize what projects need to be done. So these are the major projects within this budget line. So at Farmington High School, we are proposing repairing floor sections in the cafeteria and kitchen, that's a safety concern, shade replacements that we've been working on over time, same thing with the electrical hand dryers in the 900 wing, that would be the last wing that we would need to do for the bathrooms, and that replaces the use of paper towels, sidewalk repair, another safety concern, and a walk behind snow blower. I think that one speaks for itself. You'll see here, this is what the sidewalk looks like. So it is not safe. At IAR Middle School, our, oh, go ahead, sure.
Question about the high school, Alicia? So understood security issues for major repairs. So would shade replacements or the hand dryers, are they able to be sort of repurposed, you know, if, you know, we, you know, before building construction or?
That's a great question. I cannot speak to whether, whether the hand dryer can be repurposed, but I could certainly find out. What I do know is that it is the last of all, and that it does save on the cost of waste for paper towels. So I could, I can certainly go back to Tim and get clarity on that as well as the shades. At IAR, last year we began with the bathroom partitions, changing them over, and we're hoping to do that in another area of the building. The type of material that we use for that is so that students can't write on them or deface them or put comments, and I'll show you a picture in a moment. Also, a boost auto scrubber is needed, and flooring in the seventh grade commons, we're proposing a new material, it's called Nora Flooring, and it can go over the flooring. And as you can see, this is what some of the flooring looks like currently. And those are what the bathroom partitions look like. At Westwoods, the iChariot carpet machine needs to be replaced. We had a, Westwoods has a hammy down from the high school that's many years old, and the entire building is carpeted, I shouldn't say entire, but the majority of the building. Classroom painting hasn't been able to happen because we've been, Westwoods has been fully occupied during the summer months for many, many years. So this year, they're going to have a little reprieve, so they're hoping to paint some spaces, and they're looking to replace the loading dock, the lift for where things are dropped off into the school, and I'll show you a picture of that. It's rusted and needs replacement. At East Farms, this is a continuation of a few multi-year projects that have begun, suspended ceiling project, we're hoping to do four more classrooms. These are all, these are recommendations from the K8 facility review, as well as replace, replacing the awning windows, this specific set of classroom windows. We're hoping to coincide with the facility project that we're doing this summer, so it would make sense to do it at the same time, the area that we chose, as well as the interior soffit repair and painting is also priority. We're going to be working on the exterior soffit through the building project, and we're hoping to be able to do the two things at the same time. That's East Farms, and that's what the soffit looks like from the exterior and the interior. And then you can see what the ceiling looks like before and after. At Union School, we're proposing thin tube radiation, replacement of the teacher workroom cabinets, painting the gym ceiling grid and pads, and line trimmer. I'll show you what, this is what the workroom cabinets look like. That's the gym ceiling. At Noah Wallace School, again, we have some areas that are in need of painting based on projects that we've completed. Lower level hallway project, we're hoping to, the lower level hallway has some areas where there's differences in the flooring, like step up and step down, that we'd like to even out for safety reasons, suspended ceiling project, and then also in need of a walk behind snow blower. That's what the lower level of Noah looks like. West District, we're proposing air conditioning for two rooms. If you can visualize West District on the part that is near the courtyard, the sun is beautiful, but also creates a big disparity in the temperature. So we have two rooms we're hoping to add air conditioning to. Again, they have a phased window shade replacement project, some are in the classroom spaces, some in the hallways. Exterior door replacement, this is also a project we've been phasing over time. Their stage curtain needs new ropes for the opening and closing. Door hardware upgrade and painting.
Quite honestly, the West District's stage curtain looks like a, like a security issue or a safety issue.
Right, right, well.
You're being nice. That looks like a safety issue.
And that's West District, and that's what it looks like. Any, any questions about any of the projects? Trying to be thoughtful with phasing of projects, responding to the facility review, and also the upgrades that we've made recently in some of our buildings through our security, recent security projects, so.
I would like to say something about page 43. You know, this week, we had an issue at the high school with two sections of the high school without water, and it had to do with a valve that was, you know, because we have an aging building, the internal workings are aging. And we had shut off the valve to do repairs, and we couldn't, we couldn't then turn it back on. What at times I hear is that because, that's happening because we're not maintaining FHS. And I want to point this page out to everyone, because you see this page in our budget every year. We have not diminished maintenance to FHS. I want to be really clear about that, because we have students and adults here that we want them to come into a building that is healthy and safe. But our building is aging and has many, many issues, as we know. So I just wanted to point that out, because at times we'll hear that as a reason why, but the board has not diminished support for maintenance at FHS. So I just wanted to, given the recent issue that we had here.
What we do is, is put tax dollars into a failing building. That's, it's always been very difficult for us to do that, but we do do it, and you're right, Kathy, we do maintain it, but it is, I would call that good money after bad, so hopefully we can remedy that. Any other questions?
Just a
Andrea?
On page 46, which is the union account, yeah, on your slide, you have painting gym ceiling grids and pads as $9,700, but on page 46, it says $9,000?
I'm not, I'm not 100 percent, but I, sometimes we put in a expected budgeted amount, and then we get a quote, but I can check on that.
And then just on page 45, the Westwoods one, this is more just that the replace loading dock lift platform, the number's there, but the line
Yes.
detail isn't there?
Do replace
And you have classroom painting with the amount, but it's not
Listed.
listed there, it's on the bottom of the stuff. Just
Cleaning, yep. It's here, but, yeah.
I just want to make a comment, and with an eye towards Monday night. I added up the total repairs requested in accounts 431, 432, and 433, right? That's in-house repair costs, contractors coming in to do things we don't do ourselves, and then the projects. And that comes out to $708,000, more or less. And I know we talk about how frequently over the last 10 years we've deferred, and we've held off on repairs and things of that nature. But I just want to let you know, that's kind of a thing I have an eye on for Monday night, if we're going to be requiring to make cuts, if we decide that's what we're going to do. Just letting it out, letting it out there. So my question would be, Kathy, if we took $100,000 out of those three accounts, would that, how significant of that, an impact would that be in terms of what you guys have just presented? And I need to present it thoroughly, and I'm fully aware of the challenges our district has. It's not a question of this, of dismissing the concerns, it's a question of just dollars and cents. But if we took $100,000 out of those three accounts, those, if we swept 100 out of those three accounts, how
Could you just rename the accounts?
Sure. 431, building repairs in-house. 432, building repairs contractors. And 433, building repairs projects.
Thank you.
Just curious as to what that would look like and how significant of an impact that would be. Because as we're looking at impacts everywhere, it's going to become a question of
You know, we just, I will say, we have, except for Westwoods, we have aging buildings throughout the district. And so these accounts help us to have more longevity in our facility.
I understand that.
So, you know, I, I say that, but we can definitely look at that. It's also going to erode a base that then has to be made up for in future, you know, next year or the year after, you know? So that's always something that can be concerning when these are just like the cost of doing business, are these accounts to keep our schools, you know, at a level where, you know, where
And some of these
being proactive.
Some of the items are things that have been asked for previously that have been cut to.
I'm fully aware of that.
Yes.
Fully, I want to be very clear. I think you know how full, I am fully aware of the pain and the cost when we go to this account. But we're looking at a 451 right now.
Yes, yes.
Got it.
All set, Liz?
Another, well, I just wanted to add to what Bill just said. I haven't been able, I was trying to add it up now, but I'm using my phone, and it's not the greatest calculator. I think it's user error, though, but I was just looking at, maybe another way to look at that would be only adding the dollar amounts that are health and safety concerns in those, you know? I would think, and maybe
That's fair, that's a good point.
Leaving the others deferred.
Yep.
So separating that out.
Separating out just the health and safety concerns per the Friar report, the K8 report.
Right.
And then also, and then the high school health and safety concerns as well.
Right. As opposed to maybe a specific dollar amount?
Right, as opposed to
Yeah, I understand.
A dollar amount that's just made
It's arbitrary, it's completely arbitrary.
I was going to say arbitrary, but I didn't want
No, it is arbitrary. I freely admit that.
So Bill, do you, would you like to still see the impact of reducing that?
I like Liz's suggestion better. If you can go through those three accounts and identify what's health and safety versus
Anyone else?
Anyone else, then? All set? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 51, lease of building in the amount of $2,200? Motion? Second. Discussion?
This is flat, and I have written down that it has to do with storage for the Farmington Alternative High School, the robotics. I will say that I referenced earlier how we worked with the town to identify a town facility for the alternative high school. If you remember, the cost to lease the other building was in this account, and it no longer is. So just, there's the relationship to custodial over time in the alternative high school. It used, the, the cost for that facility was in lease of buildings. It's very small now, because it's just a store, for storage.
Any questions for Kathy? That's it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 52, lease of equipment in the amount of $188,547? Motion? Second. Discussion?
So this is a, a large increase, and part of it is, 13,000 is for printing, and 25,000, do I not have this?
Wait, is it 13,000?
Yes.
Increase for printing?
Yes.
And 25,000 for additional copiers?
No.
No?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
We're going in a different direction.
Okay. Well, you can go in that direction if you like. I like to go in a direction.
So we moved the printing services from computer supplies into this account, because to be consistent, that we're using our copiers and our printers, it's all coming out of one account.
Okay.
We're previously spreading it across multiple computer supply accounts. Over the past year, we actually reduced our total printing contract cost from about $40,000 a year down to $13,000 a year. And we did that by adding some additional copiers, and that was to the tune of about 25K. In addition, this account was, money was taken out last year to help us to, that was the right terminology, to help achieve budget efficiencies. The account was reduced by 30 grand, but the reality is, we still had to have to pay our usage of copiers and what it costs. That $30,000 just came from a different bucket. It came out of some grants that we get from the federal government for our E-Rate. So it, what you see there is the restoration of the actual cost, the addition of seven copy machines, copiers throughout the district, and the shift of the printer, the printing contract over to the second. And I don't know if there, is this just lease of equipment, is it just strictly copier, or are there other leases in addition?
So Matt, are we seeing other reductions in other, other areas in equipment?
In computer supplies.
Oh, okay.
There was a reduction in computer supplies, because that's where we were paying for the, the printing. We continue to look at our overall copier usage, and in fact, where the first anniversary of that contract is this spring, and the ERC is already in negotiations with the contractor. We are looking at additional savings, because they're looking at replacing the equipment itself. So we're, we're hoping to see, they're projecting that by, you know, if, if the ERC decides to renew their, the contract, they will come in and they will replace the copy machines that we just got four or five years ago. And we'll see additional cost savings in our overall copier costs.
Okay.
But that will be in year 21, 22.
Yeah.
Liz?
So is our overall paper usage trending downward in the district a little bit?
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's like negligible. We, I've watched the numbers, even with the shift from printers to copiers, we didn't see a huge change in overall usage. We just realized a cost savings. The cost to print a color page on the printing contract is 13 cents. The cost to print a color page on our copier contract is 3 cents. So that's where we're seeing our savings, and that's why we did what we did in terms of adding copiers in, and reducing the number of printers in the district, which also helped us reduce our contract.
Do you foresee any kind of shift to going paperless, like in?
We have where, where we can. So back to data, data processing, the recruiting and hiring system that we put in has moved us, when we bring a new hire in, we are conducting the majority of their forms electronically through that system instead of a packet of papers. So we are, we are chipping away at that, but again, there's still, it's, it's shifting costs as well.
You know, a lot at the operations level, whether it's requesting a day off, and things, things that use, we would get papers that we would sign, we've, you know, it's all electronic.
Time clock system, that I just talked about.
Yeah.
We upgraded our time clock system, so we can request through that system. There's another, that's another example of, it's just that we're shifting those costs, and those costs go up too.
Well, right, you, you're saving on paper, but you have to pay more for the, the application, right?
Right. And the same is true in digitization of documents, you know, we are doing that in special services. They're going through scanning the, the paper and attaching it to the student electronically, but we still have to pay for that service.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 53, transportation services in the amount of $3,620,310? Motion? Second. Discussion?
You can see the increase per contract, it's a 3.75% increase in our contract for the 2020, 2021 school year.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 54, field trips in the amount of $10,521? Motion? Second. Discussion?
So this is limited to field trip transportation for students. It does reflect the 3.75% increase. I also think it might have some items in there that we hadn't budgeted for, but we actually do go on various field trips that might not have been in there. So, you know, that's kind of a reset that we're having here as well, because you can see it's a little higher than the 3.75%.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 55, telephone in the amount of $100,596? Motion? Second. Discussion?
So Matt is here. I have on this page, dedicated to Matt. I don't know.
The savings you see, just its cost containment in the dial tone services, so oddly in line through Frontier, and cellular services, where our, our district has given us an option that we can now put an app with a dedicated phone number on administrator phones. So I've been working that through attrition, and, and going that route, which is a little bit of a cost savings over providing a full cellphone with service.
Okay. So Matt's excellent work.
Thank you, Matt.
Any questions for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 56, postage in the amount of $50,442? Motion? Second. Discussion? On postage?
So Alicia will provide.
I was, it just links a little bit to what we were saying about reducing paper use, less mailing, more things electronically sent out to parents, and, you know, state reports now, we're finally getting them all as one, so we can do one bulk mailing, so it was a reduction across the board, which is good.
Great. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 57, data line in the amount of $170,118? Motion? Second. Discussion?
So this is another?
Yeah.
Matt item?
This is another account which we, we reduced because we used federal funding for E-Rate last year. The, the problem with that is that our federal funding is slowly being reduced, and a lot of that comes from, in order to get that federal funding, our reimbursement rate is 40%. We have to spend the money upfront, then we get the, the money back, but you have to spend the money. So you gotta have the money to spend too. So we're seeing that, that reimbursement is shrinking, so instead of banking on that for this year, again, we restored what the actual amount is for our data, our internet
Any questions for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 58, printing in the amount of $34,182? Motion? Second.
Did you make the motion and the second?
No, she said motion, so I said second.
Okay.
We both said it at the same.
Jump in any time over here.
We both said it at the same time.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes, so this is our printing account, and there's a slight decrease, but of $200.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 59, public tuition in the amount of Motion? Second. Discussion?
So this page and the next page have to do with out placements in the area of special services. We, the, the amounts are much higher than this, but we apply excess costs, which is a grant that we receive from the state. Anytime we spend four and a half times our per pupil level, whatever's above that four and a half times, we submit to the state and we receive reimbursement. We talked about this on Monday. It is supposed to be 100% reimbursement above that level, and we don't receive close to that, which is something that we continually speak to the state about as a real concern when it comes to fully funding special education in, in the state of Connecticut.
Kathy, in the past, we talked about how we projected the, the expected reimbursement rate, because we don't get our money, we don't know what we're going to get until the end of next year anyway.
Yes.
End of next calendar year, will we find out what the reimbursement, and we try to project this number in part based on what we believe the ECS number's going to be. And historically, in the past, we've projected it at about 70%.
Mm-hmm.
And that continues to be the case?
This year, we, we use 65%.
Okay, so you, you.
We're a little more conservative.
A little more conservative on the expected reimbursement. But historic, and I know, this has been a, a place where we've talked about this, right? In the past. Is there a stomach, I guess, for a better way to describe it, to, to go back and do that at expected at 70%, or you just don't want to fool with it?
Well, you know, we could show you what that is. I would say that, given our current trends, and over the last few years, I would probably stay with the 65%.
What do they reimburse, what did they reimburse us at last year?
Was it? Yeah.
Can you, can we find that out?
We could definitely find that out.
Yeah, let's find out what that is over the last three, I guess the last three years we have statistics, I'd like to know what the reimbursement rate was.
Sure. I would say to you that it's a flat amount at the state, so they don't increase it, and it just depends upon all of the 166 cities and towns submit their excess costs, and we share it. We, we share it. So if it's a bad year, we're going to get less.
Did the impounding by the, by the governor, you know, he, he held all that money until December, basically. How did that impact our, our budget in, in any way? It was just, it was okay? In other words?
We don't receive it until.
No, but this is going back, you know, so, on the, but the, the money that we would have normally gotten in the spring of 2019, we didn't get until December of 2019, correct? Didn't, didn't the ECS money get held up?
We don't get, we don't, so that's different money.
That's the money.
Excess cost, same acronym, unfortunately.
So it's the different ECS.
It's a, yeah, so ECS goes to the town.
Got it, all right. I wasn't sure about that.
And excess cost comes to us. I, I will say that this is a very, you know, as said to the legislators, it's not only volatile, but there is a proposal for an excess cost insurance co-op. And there is interest at the state. You know, we would have to, I know CAPS is expressing its grave concern over this, because basically, we would have to pay upfront at the beginning of a school year, a significant amount of money to be, to, and we would not have a choice to not be in the co-op.
So it would be a premium, essentially. You pay into an insurance policy, and then that covers the cost.
And there's, you know, an equity formula that we would, I believe, they will not run the simulations for it, which we have requested as a CAPS organization, because I want to know, over the last five years, if they, if we were in a co-op, what would have been the impact to Farmington? What would be the impact to New Britain? All of the, all of the towns and cities in Connecticut, they haven't been able to do that. You know, an equity formula always means that ability to pay towns will pay more.
But.
So, you know, I just, I, I say that we don't know where this is going, which could make it even more challenging for us in, in special services. So I don't want to, I don't want to say it's, I don't want to even give my opinion until I see a simulation. That's my problem, is that we haven't received, you know, when we see things from the state, typically, they're going to do something different with ECS. They run the simulation to show legislators, to show elected officials at the local level, here's the impact to your community. They're not doing this here, and they're very, you know, it, I, I went to a meeting this week, and so I just say that this excess cost grant, right now, there's proposals to change how that's done. And, you know, from my perspective, just fully fund excess costs, and I think everyone in Connecticut, all of the districts would be fine with that, and, and would do well with that. It's just that it's not fully funded at this point.
So for those watching at home, and might be curious about this particular line item, this number is as high as it is because we're anticipating the state not fully funding its obligation to the town.
Which has been.
And, and that's been consistent over, year over year, for as long as we've been doing it.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 60, private tuition in the amount of Motion? Second. Discussion?
Similar to the last page.
All set? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 61, tuition to educational service agencies in the amount of $159,000? Motion? Discussion?
So this provides funding for special services cost for students in magnet schools, and tuition, sorry, tuition cost for the Farmington Valley Diagnostic Center, which we're part owners of. It's a collaborative in this region. The increase is not only due to increased student need, but also, we are now being billed back for 504 services that we were previously never billed back for in our, the magnet schools, and that was a decision with the Connecticut State Department of Education to then make that shift. That we would also not only pay for students that require additional services and have an IEP, but now we're also required to pay for services for students who have a 504 and who are in magnet schools. So that's why you see an increase.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Carrie, excuse me. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 62, tuition other in the amount of $40,000? Motion? Second. Discussion?
There's no increase here. This is mandated for adult education. We do this in a collaborative way with other communities in the area, so we really do provide a wonderful service beyond Farmington by doing this as, you know, a regional group that provides adult education. by doing this as, you know, a regional group that provides adult education for residents. And this is not enrichment. So, you know, just to be clear, you know, it has to do with high school equivalency, citizenship, and English as a second language.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 63, travel, in the amount of $82,110?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So this provides travel stipends for administrators and teachers per contracts and funds for conferences and DLC training and professional development. There is a decrease here, and that is Kim's work in trying to eliminate travel between schools. Kinda relates to what I said earlier, though. If we were to try to make some reductions where we have more part-time or, you know, we're having people travel between schools, there's an, you know, increase here. So just to be clear as we go forward.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 64, natural gas, in the amount of $274,854?
So the next, oh, sorry.
I need a motion.
Yeah, I did, I'm sorry. We're going along so well. So the next two pages, Alicia will provide an overview.
So both with the natural gas and electricity, as you know, either abnormally hot weather in the summer or abnormally cold weather in the winter can increase the price for gas, oil, electricity. We do work with CES, which is Competitive Energy Services. We were in an electrical supplier contract through November of 2021. That's our, so that's our supplier cost, but that is not the delivery. So again, similar to your home, that can fluctuate, and we're certainly seeing an increase in that. As far as a little bit of electrical savings, we have put in some more efficient systems. So you may see, like, at certain sites, we're having some savings, and that is for, you know, IAR, for example, there's a decrease. And we have slowly, over time, upgraded their heating and cooling systems. As far as natural gas, that's a tough one. We are gonna see an increase with the dehumidification project that we're proposing at Westwoods. And the reason for that is because we're gonna be adding two gas-fired boilers, which are gonna provide both for heating and cooling, so we had to account for that. And again, as, you know, we, these are things we continue to monitor, but we looked at trends over five years to make our predictions and worked with CES to make those projections.
Any questions for Alicia? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. I just need to have a motion to approve page 65, electricity, in the amount of $1,048,935.
Motion. Second.
We've, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that concludes services. Thank you, everybody. Now we're gonna start on supplies. Okay. So may I have a motion to tentatively approve page 68, instructional supplies, in the amount of $470,591?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So this is a slight decrease of $4,618, you know, zero-based budgeting and reductions from where principals brought in their supply accounts. I'll say, in this account as well, we've had a purchasing freeze. So to further reduce this for a second year, you know, is an issue for us because of this year's budget. So, but we did make reductions already to this account.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 69, student activity athletic supplies, in the amount of $286,966?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So you can see what this covers, comprehensive interscholastic athletic program at FHS, inter-school competition at IAR. And it also is extracurricular programs at Farmington High School and IAR. So it has in here, the increases include requests for uniform jerseys at IAR and cost of tennis and volleyballs for FHS. So that's where the increase is.
Any questions?
Les.
So how does, how do you decide what sports are available for inter-school competition at IAR? Is it, is it based on participation or based on...
Interschool?
Inters.
Like, they're, they're just within the school itself, you mean, or against other schools?
Against other schools. Against other schools.
There's three that they have. They have volleyball, cross-country, and field hockey. I can't speak to how they've decided that.
Oh, I know. It's about, it's about participation. We've had other sports there, but many of other sports have elite groups working with students outside of the school system, and we just don't have participation. So at times, when we have low participation, we have cut sports. So it really is about, you know, participation levels.
Okay. Thank you.
I think we talked about this in another budget.
We did, we did.
Other schools being able to compete with us too.
Too, absolutely. You need enough schools, but that, that elite competition is everywhere. It's not just in Farmington, it's across the region.
So that's probably why there's...
There's no softball, there's no baseball, there's no basketball.
Right.
At other schools, so there's no one for them to compete with.
You have travel ba, for example, you have travel basketball in seventh, eighth grade. That completely destroys, and both men and women, both boys and girls, whatever.
Yeah.
It's just a question we get asked a lot, so I just thought this would be a good place to bring it up since...
Yeah. Yeah.
I just had a question too. With, like, uniform jerseys in the high school and IAR, are they on, like, some sort of a rotation? Every five to whatever years, they get new ones?
So my understanding is that the high school looks at, yes, they have a rotation, and then they, one girls, one boys. Yep.
So IAR is up this year. Okay.
I do have a question about uniforms. Do the booster clubs help you reimburse some of that? Because, like, I've been on the booster club, and we've helped out and raised a lot of money and tried to give back.
Yeah. So the boosters provide, this, this account would be much higher.
I know you can't rely on it.
If we didn't have our booster clubs. So we're very fortunate that we have such community engagement and support from our parents. The, the boosters are there too, if, at times, and I can't give a specific example, but just in my time in public schools, whether it's been in this district or others, they can accelerate a uniform purchase. Yes. But it always has to be under a Title IX umbrella. We're very careful about if, if it's a girls' team that's going to accelerate a uniform, we must then purchase uniforms for a boys' team. So we keep that very equitable. Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 70, office supplies, in the amount of $73,682?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So again, zero-based budgeting, we just tried to find efficiencies. So you see a slight decrease of $2,744, or 3.59% decrease.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 71, library supplies, in the amount of $17,050?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So there's a slight increase here. I do, it most likely has to do with just the classes now, right? That we're providing at the elementary level, but I don't know if you have any insights. It's zero-based budgeting, but it's definitely having to do with more hands-on type of student-centered work.
More full-class instructional supplies.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 72, testing materials, in the amount of $47,463?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So Kim is going to just provide an overview of this page.
This page includes funding for our annual PSAT testing cycle, the CWRA assessment that we give. We also use a DRP reading assessment in grades three to eight and a Lexile reading assessment for freshmen as they enter the high school. And so the modest increase is just annual fees for giving those particular assessments, change would be.
Any questions for Kim?
Kim, the college work readiness assessment, was that given this year or no?
We, it wouldn't normally be given yet, but we are seriously considering not giving that assessment this year, again, due to constraints on this year's budget. And just, you know, with the confidence that our students have been performing very well for a number of years, and could we possibly think of this as a one-year hiatus, if you will, from that assessment, but returning to it? It's still very important to the school. So it's, it's been considered.
What's the cost to that?
That's a good question. I, I, I'm guessing it's in the neighborhood of $20 per student, but, but I could definitely get you that actual cost.
Kim, do, do many districts or do all districts administer that?
No, we are very rare in administering it. In fact, the, generally, the districts in Connecticut that, they're not districts, they're private schools who give that assessment in Connecticut. So I think there are a couple of other public schools who do. But because of its direct alignment to our vision of the graduate, we, we really liked having that kind of bench, external benchmark of our students' performance. And some students have begun to use it in their college admissions process, here and there, to say, you know, that, on a student-choice basis, we don't automatically put it on the transcript, but some students have used that to demonstrate skillfulness in the areas that the assessment evaluates.
I've received a lot of questions from other superintendents now that all districts are creating a vision of the graduate. Well, how do you assess that? And we have internal assessments along the way, but that external assessment is very important. So I do think that as time moves on, we may have more public schools taking advantage of that, because it is so aligned to those transferable thinking and learning skills that we often see in a vision of the graduate.
And it's given to one grade, right?
Right, right.
Our sophomores.
Okay. Any other questions for Kim? All in favor? Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 73, health supplies, in the amount of $20,872?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
So there are some increases here, EpiPens, and then, as you know, by policy, Narcan. So we, you know, that, that's reflected in the increase.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 74, audiovisual computer supplies, in the amount of $130,660?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
It's an interesting title for this particular budget page, but Matt is here to go over this. This won't sound new to you, because this was part of his presentation.
This account is made up of a couple of smaller AD supply accounts, but then the larger one being the one that I presented on during the preliminary technology presentation. About $7,000 of that increase is related to filter and firewall. And that's what, we're required to have an internet filter by, under Sifa. And those increases are just reflected based on those licenses.
Any questions for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. I have a motion to tentatively approve page 75, custodial supplies, in the amount of $127,608. Can I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
So as we receive the request from each school, this is, it's a slight increase of $546, or 0.43% increase here. But this, these are the supplies for all of our facilities here in Farmington.
Any questions?
I have one. So in the narrative here, you mentioned that there are more than 2,000 hours of after-school use by community organizations. So would we see on the revenue side, where there are some fees, do we charge?
Yeah, revenues have already been applied to all budget lines, whether it's custodial costs that individuals are, you know, providing fees for if they're renting our buildings. But that's all figured into the rental, right?
We do, we do have building use fees, if that's what you're asking.
Yes.
Custodial fees, yep.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 76, gasoline, in the amount of $161,356?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So in our transportation contract, we are unique that the, the bus company does pay partially for gasoline. It, they used to, in previous contracts, pay a little more, but they pay the first 75, we pay anything over 75 cents per gallon. But our bus company pays the first 75 cents of every gallon of gasoline.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. I have a motion to tentatively approve page 77, textbooks, in the amount of $228,583.
So Kim?
Second.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. Discussion.
It's okay.
So the increase in this particular account is primarily for the purchase of a AP Statistics textbook. The one students are using now is very outdated. And there's a small increase. Each school is working to purchase more diverse texts for read-alouds and classroom libraries to, you know, really diversify the, the types of characters and settings that students are reading about aligned with our Equity Matters core belief.
Any questions for Kim? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 78, library books, in the amount of $59,000?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
So this is one of many lines that received reductions during my review, our review of the budget. It, it's a reset when it comes to library books. And, you know, we'll see in future years, but it's, you know, for the amount that's in here, it's a significant reduction of $19,000 or 24.36% of this account.
Les?
When you, I understand it's zero-based budgeting, so it's a, do you see it as a reset across the board for all libraries? Or did you see it as one specific librarian, like, how did you see this as a reduction?
So we made a reduction, so it came in much higher than this.
Right. Was it one library that was higher, or was it across the board?
No, it was across the board. However, if a library was way, way off, you know, so one school may have had 4,000 more, we said, well, this is also a reset. That maybe, you know, there was a situation where it wasn't really based on the enrollment. It had, you know, was creeping up a bit. So we looked at it as, let's now, like, level set this. And, but I do think this is a significant increase, and you will, decrease, and you will probably see an increase next year. But we said, well, for one year, we're going to first level set, and then we're going to see how things go next year.
Anyone else? Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 79, library subscriptions, in the amount of $42,479?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
Anything, Matt? All right there. License. License.
Okay. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion to tentatively approve page 80, professional subscrib- professional subscriptions in the amount of $7,428?
Motion? Second.
So a slight decrease for subscriptions to services related to education. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion attentively approve page 81, technology-related supplies in the amount of $216,106?
Motion? Second.
Discussion. Amen?
So, um, I broke this down a couple of different ways, but there is a 25, a $26,000 increase. Uh, we had a $6,000 increase for some special education software that's used to serve students with dyslexia. Um, about 24, it's kind of, because there's, there's ups and downs. There were reductions in, in some software, and then there were increases. We are seeing an increase in our Microsoft licensing. And then there, a chunk of this, a large chunk of this, is money that is being put towards an upgrade of antivirus and antivirus and endpoint protection application. And endpoint protection is what protects our, our machines and our folks against ransomware, against malware, just a lot of things like that.
Any questions for Matt? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Okay, we'll move on to equipment. Oh, wow, we're almost done.
Yes, I know that.
Okay. Right, um, all right. May I have a motion attentively approve page 82, replacement of equipment in the amount of $128,000?
Motion? Second.
Discussion.
So you'll see in follow-up pages, um, you know, what replacement is. Matt is here for these next two pages. Uh, but you'll see listings for all of that, um, there. And at times, you'll see this big decrease in replacement and a, a large increase in new. And it's just, are we replacing or are we actually buying new equipment? So you're going to see a relationship between replacement and new equipment.
You know what I'm saying? The, the philosophy is we've, we've purchased our Chromebooks in replacement in previous years because we were replacing the stock that was in our classrooms. Along with the proposal to go to a take-home one-to-one, we're purchasing new machines. And yes, we're going to collect those back in four years, but they aren't really useful. So it's, it's just shifting where it's showing up. All along, we've still been buying new machines. It's just where we put it. That's all.
Questions for Matt?
I, I, I'm not sure how to articulate the question because I'm not really sure what it is that I'm asking.
It's okay.
If I'm going to get it out there, we can at least talk about it. So in the repair, I'm sorry, in the repair, sorry. In the, um, replacement equipment line, we're decreasing by 187,000. And in the new equipment line, we're adding 144,000.
Yeah, but it's an actual saving.
Right, right. If, if we agree that it's the appropriate time to do the one-to-one rollout, right? So in other words, let's say we deferred the one-to-one rollout for a year. What does that look like in terms of just a normal budget year?
So it depends on how we structure it. And I mean, the, the reality is we have to purchase, in order to maintain our existing inventory, we still have to purchase about 750 to 800 machines each year.
I understand that.
Um, it, we could come at it from a couple of different perspectives. The, where we're seeing the savings is in that the cost per device has come down to now we can get, a device is less than $200. Again, based on buying a bulk. We're getting our devices for just under $200. We're adding on the management fee, and I'm also adding on a case for the, you know, with the, the take-home one-to-one. It's just that overall cost has decreased over time. So that's where that savings falls in. In terms of whether or not we defer a one-to-one or go forward with it, there is no real cost savings. In a way, we're still, let's say we, let's say we, um, broke it up and we only did a, a couple of grade levels. We're just deferring some of that cost to the next year in order to bring those grade level, those grade levels in.
Well, that last part is kind of what I'm getting at, is that you can still break it down. In other words, forgetting new equipment, for, you know, forgetting that, that thought process. If you're just doing a simple, if we're doing this budget last year, we're just looking at the replacement line, you can actually modify the request if there's an understanding that we're not going to be able to do a full fund of a complete replacement. Right, okay. All right. That was my question, I guess it came out pretty good.
It did. Awesome.
I wasn't sure, I wasn't sure. I kind of worked it out as I was asking.
No, it, it's like, it's. Are you, are you good, Bill?
Yeah, I am, thanks.
Okay. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. May I have a motion attentively approve page 91, new equipment, other, in the amount of $228,084?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
We just kind of discussed it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all right, dues and fees. Okay. All right, may I have a motion to tentatively approve page 100, insurance, other than employee benefits, in the amount of $184,122?
Motion? Second.
Discussion.
So, um, again, to provide insurance coverage in the area, and you can see all the areas. And again, we work with Joe on this, and he does a wonderful job, uh, you know, keeping those costs down in those accounts.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. Can I have a tentative, a motion to tentatively approve page 101, memberships in the amount of $58,058?
So I, I.
Motion? Second.
I'm just so happy that I have a reduction for this page. So I. So after we had finished the budget book, we were looking at our memberships. It's unusual for us to have an increase in memberships. It's usually flat. So I was looking at that. And, you know, we, we do belong to EdLeader 21. It's been, um, a great resource to us, especially during the, the first few years of implementing a vision of the graduate. It was extremely helpful. We feel that, you know, it might be a time to move away from EdLeader, not because it's not a great organization, it's just where we are at this point in time. Uh, you know, we have to look, especially with the increase, and, and look at ways to reduce it. So it would be a reduction of 6,000 to memberships.
Any questions?
So what's the new page number?
Number would be $52,058. The increase would be $1,191, and the percent increase would be 2.44%.
Do you, do we have also, should we do an overall? I know it's not much, but, yeah.
Overall is, that brings the overall to $85,265. Making the new number 70,757,858. That's an increase of $3,49,253 and 4.50.
Great work, everybody.
All right.
Can I have a motion attentively approve page 101, memberships?
As amended.
As amended.
Motion?
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's. To ten, uh, can I have a motion to tentatively approve page 102, grand total? Oh, wait a minute.
I'll make a motion to approve page 102. I have the new number. Breaking my flow, lady. I'll make a motion to approve page.
Tentatively.
Tentatively approve page 102. No, make, I'm.
Takes a village.
I'm approving it. Tentatively approve page 102 for, uh, in the amount of $70,757,858.
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? Okay, we are done. Uh, we are going to move into executive session and grab some lunch. We have some, okay? Make it a motion to come out of executive session.
Motion? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, so at this time, we have, thank you, everyone. We have finished going through the budget line by line. So, uh, what I just want to finish up with is I have a list, I'll go over the list of questions that were not answered today that our central office will prepare for us when we reconvene on Monday. Um, so before I do that, um, I want to open up to the board if there is anything else, um, any other discussions, questions that you would like to bring up at this time? Anybody? Okay. Um, I just, Kathy, I have a question for you. Um, I was curious, what was the dollar amount that you reduced your, uh, the dollar amount that you reduced after requests from, uh, district leaders? Oh, did, did you put it?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll.
Thank you. It's a little over 800.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Like 850 or 800ish.
Yes. It was over 800,000?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's fine, Matt, that's fine. So I wanted to, um, I know we have a list of questions. I'll go over in a minute. I wanted to ask you, we, uh, I think on Monday, we'll look into some, uh, obvious areas. But I wondered if you had, as your review, we obviously didn't get that far today in reducing our budget, and, and it's our goal to do a little bit more. As you bring back to us some additional, uh, ideas for reductions, is there any way, or is there any possibility you can identify any faculty that does not work directly with children? Just who is, um, working with adults? And that if potentially there's any efficiencies there?
Okay.
And that's all I have. Anybody else? Okay, so then I want to go, uh, from this morning until now, I want to go over the questions that, um, that have come up that we want to have Kathy and Alicia bring back to us on Monday. Uh, and if I have missed something, you let me know. So, uh, we. Okay, so in the services account, we would like a breakdown of what is mandated and non-mandated in special education, I believe. That was 603, oh, of, okay, in the services account. I didn't write the page number down.
It's, um, actually many accounts. Uh, that's when we took the 603-850, I believe, is when we showed you all increases in special services across accounts.
Okay.
So we'll look into all of those across accounts.
Okay, so across the, okay, beyond the services account? Okay, good, okay. Um, and there was a question, question for Lori and you, to identify any suggestions how we would reduce non-mandated special services? Page 29. The breakdown between mandated and non-mandated special ed services, that's in professional ed services. Would that fall into the first question?
It falls into the first question.
Okay, so that came after, okay, it's perfect, okay. Uh, there was a question if, under equipment repair, um, if we're under the same contract. That was a question for Tim Harris.
About the trash removal.
The trash removal. Okay, they know, good. Um, also, uh, just a, a quick question in FHS, major projects about repurposing the dryers and the shades. Um, we're, we're going to double-check the, the price on the union school gym ceiling.
The discrepancy, yep.
Okay, and.
And we're going to just update those pages.
The pages for Westwood.
Yep, and you'll get updated pages on any page that we reduce. So you'll have the updated amount.
Okay. And then in the accounts 431, 432, and 433, if you could break out, um, I think that was in major projects, separate the health and safety concerns, uh, projects that are health and safety concerns. Uh, okay. In the public tuition, there was a question about the percentage we budgeted for excess cost for last year and the cost of the CWRA testing materials. That's all I have. Have I missed anything, or is there anything else? Liz?
I think that the excess cost grant, I think Bill wanted to know for the prior, the previous three years? Yeah, what, yeah, what we actually, what percentage we actually received from the state, right, okay.
One more, Ellen. Would it make, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask, would it make sense for us to look at our capital request in the health and safety vein as well? Should we maybe try and mark those for health and safety too?
I'm, that, I mean, it might make, can I speak to that? I know that, I mean, that is, the, the capital requests are kind of out of our hands because I think Kathy Blonsky is the one that does that to the town. But I think that it, that would be a good, it might be a good way to present it. I mean, it might be a way to, you could probably put on there, and you, you may have already put on there anything that's in the K8 report as a health and safety concern to, to make it easier for Kathy Blonsky to see visually and for the people in town to see visually what is a health and safety concern. I mean, that's one way to put it to her.
Just to be able to discuss it that way.
But just so.
I understand that's out of our control.
But Kathy is the one that, Kathy Blonsky is the one that controls the capital project. We hand it over to her and then she.
Yes.
She decides what's even presented to the town council.
We, Kathy and I do work together to identify, is there anything that we can push off a year? Is, what is health and safety? So we do have that, and we are having that conversation. We met, uh, with the town manager this past week just to review our request, and she asked us to do some follow-up. And we're doing that right now. So I like, you know, just that whole idea of identifying health and safety. I think that's a great way to, to look at it.
To, between the two.
Yes.
Good, thank you.
I don't, I don't know if you covered it on the pages or the objects that you were referring to, but, um, because we also talked about the summer programs and what was mandated for the special ed versus what is general ed. Yeah, and the impact.
That might fall back, sorry, that might fall back for transportation too. What is mandated and what isn't? I saw an increase in the transportation. Is that part of the mandate, special education, transportation?
Yeah, so, uh, even regular, all transportation when it comes to to and from school is mandated in Connecticut. Not all states mandate that, but in Connecticut, it is mandated. And if we're outplacing a student, we must pay for that transportation as well. Uh, so, or if a student needs a nurse on their way to and from school, you know, all of those, if that's required in the IEP. So, you know, I, there are general special education laws that are outlined at the federal and state levels. And there's some variance in Connecticut as far as special education laws. Um, but we do have to follow both. Um, it is, uh, students, IEPs are legal documents, which we must adhere to. Um, so that's where it might not be, oh, having an internal program for social and emotional learning isn't mandated by the state. However, if we have a huge need in our district and we can, um, fulfill that need with a high-quality program where students can be educated with their peers, program where students can be educated with their peers, that's, that's just good practice and best practice. So that's where it's going to get a little tricky. It's in students' IEPs, so now it is required. You know, so there definitely are choices at the district level of how we implement those federal and state mandates. And we've always had a philosophy of providing high-quality programming in Farmington in district when possible. So, you know, that, those are decisions we made as, as a community and because of, you know, our beliefs and, and all of that. So it's hard to differentiate mandated versus non-mandated. I may come back and say, you know, we had a very hard time with this, especially in the time that is given, but we certainly will make every attempt to try to show, you know, is there any areas of efficiency that, that we can see? I think, you know, we bring these questions back to Lori and to Ted and, you know, see where they are in various lines across, across this budget.
Liz?
I think for Monday, it would be helpful to have some kind of understanding of the pay-to-play change, maybe a little bit of historical perspective of our pay-to-play ask of parents, maybe what other towns have for their pay-to-play, and some kind of understanding of what any pay-to-play change, what we're asking of parents as far as contribution would mean for a budget impact, with the understanding that implementing a pay-to-play in the first place is because of a need to fill a budget gap, and that it basically is an extra tax on parents because it's something that the municipality is not providing to parents of the school system. So we need to ask the parents to provide it, and we need to be clear on what it's providing and how much it's providing, and what kind of gap it's filling in the budget.
I wonder, too, if maybe, you know, we, because we really didn't make a lot of headway today, and I know it's a very difficult budget year, if it would be worth it to take a look at, because Andrea had sort of brought up the summer school, but maybe potentially to take a look at non-special ed, not special ed, and not, certainly not anything that would help credit recovery, but are there opportunities there in, in summer school? Just something for us to have perspective and to take a look at. Anything else? I just want to thank you all. This was a long day. We had, I think, we were, we were able to really get through pretty quickly with some really, really worthy conversations and questions. And so I look forward to seeing you all Monday night. And thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.
Motion.
Oh.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Second. Go ahead.
We're adjourned.